You ready, Roxanne?
Yep, I'm ready.
It's time I call the October meeting of the Hinton Township Planning Commission to order, first item of businesses, excuse me, public comment on the agenda items. Okay, moving along, approved minutes of the September meeting. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Copy of it?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Top one could be me.
Not hearing any, entertain a motion to adopt the minutes for record.
I'll make it.
Tom made the motion in second.
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, so move. Zoning officer. You gave us, I know you got copies and you gave us...
Since the planning commission meeting was so late in the month, everything was from last month's September. So, three zoning permits and two wall permits were issued in September. If you look on your spreadsheet there, you have all the permits from the last month there. Can you put it up on the screen or you don't have it? This I do not have. Okay. I have everything else. Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. See also the MDIA report that has the list of active and completed, in progress and completed permits. Yep.
Yep.
The zoning hearing board denied the ordinance request for Eldon Village property on New Horaceburg Road. Any further action are you hearing? He's thinking about his next step. So, I haven't heard beyond that. I haven't either, okay. The attorney for the SQMA, that's the kids' racetrack, has filed an appeal of my zoning permit denial of the application. So, we're working with Mr. Teeter, the attorney for zoning hearing board. We're gonna get that on the calendar within the next four weeks. Have you read the appeal? Yes. What's their, what are they saying? He's claiming that their organization is a club and as such, they should be allowed a use permit as a club. Okay. But just because you're a club doesn't mean you can run a racetrack or anything else. Yeah. Or a hot air balloon ride. Yeah. So... Seems like quite the long shot. Yep, and I think he's just gone through the process to get to court. Okay. That's my impression. I do not know that, but that's my impression. Still a long shot. I don't understand this approach, but, okay. And a conditional use application was received by Chapel Hill Church of God for change of use from a single-family home to a group facility or shelter. Their zone is in the AC zone and they're not, a shelter or a group facility is not permitted or conditional use in that zone. So, I'm talking with the attorney to see where we're gonna go next. It might end up being a special exception since it's not a permitted or conditional use in that zone. As such, they can always apply for a special exception.
What was the maximum number of people they anticipated at this group home? Or did they say?
He did not say. It would be restricted to whatever the size of the...
Well, a person's...
...and their...
Yeah, it's not a very big house.
Right. A big onto the super, has this been anywhere besides here? Did it go before the supervisors? No, no. Okay.
No, this is the first I've seen of you.
Right, I just received this two weeks ago. Okay. Where does special exceptions go, zoning hearing again? Yes. Okay. And, you know, this is something maybe we consider, think about when you're updating the zoning ordinance. Maybe there's some more flexibility you want to allow in certain zones. Well, I've seen these abused in other areas. Oh, I'm sure. We have to be so careful with these. Suddenly you find out there's 50 people living in the house. Right, you gotta be careful. Yeah.
What does that sewage system support?
I don't know, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
Is it even a sand?
I don't, I think that's conventional.
Yeah.
Maybe loosening up on some and tightening up on others. Cause I've had...
Or even allow some more flexibility. Why isn't this a conditional use in the AC zone in addition to the RS? Is it conditional on RS or RRS? Okay. That makes sense, actually. Permitted as a conditional use in the RS zone. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Especially if it's attached to a religious organization or something. Yeah, that's a little trickier. But again, I've seen that abused. Right, absolutely. It doesn't take much until someone's cousins and extended cousins... Yeah, and then it's, oh, you can't kick these people out. They're otherwise homeless or, you know, you'll destroy all kinds of things and it's always... Let's just say that I've seen this be a major problem in other areas of the country and it's because it's, oh... I think that's why it's a conditional use. They need to make conditions upon it. You can tell. Yeah, yeah.
Aren't they also putting in a daycare? Next church is putting the daycare in?
That was taken care of by Gus before I started.
Okay, but wasn't, I think that was the plans.
I think there was.
Unlike, that combination...
That's a good point.
Having a group home around small kids ain't good.
Sounds right there.
Yeah, I mean, some places it is all right, I guess. It's alright, it's so... They anticipate single women with small children to be...
Hey, no.
In the group home? Okay.
It's like the Agape House in Gettysburg.
Alright. It's not the why. Would you shake that?
It's like the Agape House in Gettysburg. They have the single moms there and then the rescue mission has all the men. So, they separate them out to obviously avoid problems.
Yeah, okay. And a lot of that will come out during the... Yeah, exactly. The hearing. Yep, okay. That it?
Is that the end for zoning report?
While we're on zoning, I know you're gonna cover a couple of things, but MDIA still working as well as it looks like it's working? Um, yeah, we're... Do we have a single complaint from anybody from anything being late or... That's good. I haven't heard a single one and when I talk to MDIA, they don't, they aren't hearing any. So, I just think that's, that's great. Cause there's always a bump in the road in a transition like we've had. Yeah. And our new secretary, she's really stepping up. Good.
I guess she really is.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Now your engineers reports next.
The SALDO is at the supervisors now. Extra talking with thought, anticipating the ordinance to be advertised for approval and adoption in December. That's just tentative during the public comment period, something might happen, might just...
Sure. Does it have to have a hearing?
Oh, yes, it'll have to be a public meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not here, but with the supervisors, right?
Correct. Right. Plans, again, E B clearing, I'm sorry?
I have a question on the SALDO. At this October meeting of the supervisors, Senator King indicated that a question was asked by, I believe it was Mrs., oh gosh, what's her name? Mrs. Howard about the changes, their major changes made to SALDO. And he indicated, well, you know, he was a little hesitant and he said, he did not review any comparison of the old SALDO to the new. So, he was not sure and I was a little surprised that an attorney would not have been given a red line or compare right, whatever they call it these days. That's what we used to call it in the, about 10 years ago. But he claimed that he only got a keen copy of after the changes were made. So, why would that have not been supplied to him? Because, you know, an attorney, how does he know what's been changed?
He has the original, he has the original SALDO.
Yeah, and he was...
But if you have, like I've seen with Mr. Merkel had, he had handed you things that had redlining on it. They were in red for changes.
Well, he didn't really have redline. He had highlighting and some notes. It wasn't a pure compare right, just to be clear.
But that's what I mean when, how can an attorney sit there and read verbatim where the changes are without, like, why is there a compare right to that?
You wanna say something? Yes?
I'll answer that, Andy.
Because it's not a revision of the previous ordinance. It is a new ordinance that is replacing...
What, I'm sorry?
It is not a revision of an existing ordinance. It is a repeal and replace of the previous ordinance, a brand new ordinance.
I can't hear you, but I have the hearing condition, so, I'm sorry.
It's not a revision of the existing ordinance. So, there is no direct line by comparison what's changed. It is a repeal and replace with a brand new ordinance. So, comparing it to the previous one doesn't make any, make any, there's no reason to because the old one is being completely replaced.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Okay, we mentioned that Billers, I mean, variance was denied. Cronister, single-family garage and end development. I received their resubmission and I issued them another comment letter. I didn't include that in the email. If you want a copy of that comment letter, just let me know and I'll send it out to you.
Is Cronister the one that you said asked for another time extension?
Yes.
They're gonna need it. 11/22.
They're the ones that want to build a house and a garage.
Yeah, up there off Oxford Lane.
Yeah.
And they've, but they've got an extension out beyond the November 22nd.
I'll have to check on that, but I think they do. I think I just did my bit today.
Okay.
That's okay. Dominger subdivision, that's on the agenda for review tonight. They just resubmitted to the planning commission last week, so they haven't had their full 30 days to review yet. So, can't take action on it. But we can still look at it and review it until you're familiar with it.
Okay. And that one's good till December 18th?
Yes. So, we'd need to act next, next month?
Yes.
Or extended, okay? The Lehman Starner subdivision, that was approved at the last supervisor's meeting, so that'll come off. And the Hill's single lot subdivision, that was approved at the last meeting, so that'll come off on my report. Okay. Questions or comments? Okay.
Next, moving on, I guess, new businesses, the Dominger five lot subdivision. There's no one here to represent that, so we won't, plus the fact, we won't take action. Just gotta be review of the plan as...
I've given everyone 11 by 17 plans that are... Yes, thank you for that. Originally, they wanted to subdivide five lots off, most of them being 10 lots. So, if they don't have to pay any little backlogs, it would be... Based on my comments and on Andrew's comments, that wasn't an acceptable plan based on requirements. So, they resubmitted with a three lot subdivision. Tell me again why it wasn't acceptable? Well, two of the lots had panhandles and you're only allowed one with the subdivision. Yeah, I was gonna say they already have one here. Right, okay. And it appeared that they were going to sell them as residential lots and they didn't meet the ordinance requirements for residential lots. Okay. We're gonna talk about that later. Okay. Cause we're talking about the AC district, zoning district, which is what this says. So, there's some conservation measures that the township has enacted in their zoning ordinance. Restricts the size and the number of lots they can subdivide.
That was, this was part of, this was subdivided, this property was subdivided once before.
That's, that's what I hear.
Yeah, I remember something back, I don't know how many years now, but...
Yeah, there was one lot subdivided already.
Right.
That's this guy down here, in the left corner, this white block.
Yes, right here. So, just so I'm clear on it, make sure the building rights go, are transferred properly and carried through.
This is all basically, they're not proposing any, they haven't done any perk tests. So, there's a lot of, a lot of things that, you know, if they ever want to do single-family homes, I mean, really, I told them that if they go through with this, they can't, they're not allowed based on our current zoning. They're not allowed to ever put single-family homes on anything other than the parent tract.
Other than lot hood?
Right.
Okay.
Is that because, is that because of the size of it and using your building rights to make the size?
Well, not just that, I mean, the size restrictions in the zoning ordinance. In the AC, in the AC zone, you're only allowed so many lots per your original size of the parent tract.
Right.
And the lots cannot be larger than two acres.
Right.
Cause township wants to focus on keeping large agricultural properties. Yeah, which, which is... And they were proposing 10 acres and...
Okay.
Well, they under, have you talked, go ahead, Andy.
So, one of the issues with the ag, lot district, sliding scale model is it restricts the size of residential properties. When it comes to agricultural properties, specifically definition of farm usually says may include a residence.
Right.
Which farmhouse is part of the farm.
Yep.
The issue comes in is what's a farm and what's a large residential lot? You know, how do you define the difference? And there's a tendency for people to try to get creative and get large residential lots by getting around, calling them farms, getting around the, or agricultural lots and then agricultural building lots and then do the perk testing later and now you've gotten around the ordinance standards. It's against an issue that's, it comes with that model district. There's some municipalities that, okay, you want to call them, call them a farm or agricultural, okay? Prove what you're doing, prove what you're doing, the majority of the farming activity is.
Right.
You know, so it's, but it's a challenge to enforce that sort of thing, particularly when they're doing non-building waivers on 10 acre lots.
Yep.
After, after a while, it gets, you can tell by how the plan is set up and how the lot layout is. That's gonna be, okay, that's, that's being called this because they're not doing the perk testing yet.
No, yeah.
And, but once they do the perk testing, it's not gonna be an agricultural lot, it's gonna be a house lot.
Yep.
Which, you know...
We've had experience with that in the past, cause I can remember one. But anyhow, those large track like that, no testing is done on it and then they end up having to put in a very expensive special system and, and they, yeah. I know exactly what you're saying, cause it's a way of circumventing the regulations.
And I'm not saying there's not a place for those, that type of lot layout, there certainly is.
Yeah.
It's, you know, if you're gonna have ordinances, you know, follow the intent of the ordinance.
Yeah, and follow the letter. So, I guess, the minute Ted and I looked at this, we could kind of see where it was going and it's exactly what you're talking about, which is uncomfortable because then they start a process now that we're looking at and saying, this is just gonna be a big fight later. Why don't we come to an understanding what they can do now if they're willing to understand and appreciate our ordinance? So that we don't have to have the big fight later. Now, they may be spoiling for the big fight later and preparing for that. We can't, we can't stop that if that's the approach they want to take. But my question, given that, have you made it clear to them how the limitations that we would expect going to this? Okay. Both Andrew and I did. Okay, alright. And they're still on this path right now then? That's, that's what their client has directed them to do. Alright. Can we require a perk test on these lots before we move forward with this? Or we're not in the position to do that? Not if they're not proposing a... Built events. Okay.
And they have a non-building waiver.
Yeah, built in, yeah, okay. That's also on the agenda, we actually have that for, for you to sign. Well, I guess we oughta, whatever we can take into account as we look forward to our zoning regulation review. Because I haven't seen very many of these, I haven't been around that long, but I've seen enough to know this is a problem. Okay. I've used a lot of them.
Yeah. So, the building rights, it looks like their building rights are gonna be reserved with the parent tract?
Yep.
How big is that tract?
38.
I can't, I can't read this.
It's like 30.
The parent tract, the block, the white block in the middle. Can somebody read that?
39.
38.
38.37.
Alright, and then the panhandle is not an easement through that. It's separate from that, is that correct? There's no easements here?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Part of what lot?
Lot two.
Lot two, okay, thank you, alright. I just want to make sure it wasn't part of the...
It's access to that lot, it's road access to lot three.
And then the area below the panhandle, between the panhandle and, what is that, the road? Or the lot, whatever the lot line is, what's that?
It's another property.
It's another property, okay, alright.
Aren't they required to show existing buildings on the...
Should be.
They're drawing the tract.
I have shown the wells and septic systems. Being a minor subdivision, maybe they don't have to show buildings on adjacent lots, just on their own. Okay. There is an existing structure here, a barn that's shown and...
It's on the other side of Lot three.
There's one, there's an existing house right here, small, very small lot.
Yeah, that one's, gee, that's almost, that's almost on the line, isn't it?
Yeah. Looks like it is. What's the address of this?
5500.
Old Horaceburg room.
It's just up front of Oxford Lane.
Up front of Oxford.
You're going...
North, north.
North and Oxford's on your left. It's on the left, maybe quarter mile, half mile.
Okay, thanks.
No.
Is it a barn?
Yes, it's around...
Sorry?
Is it the farm where Seth Green, the plumber, used to... The farmer's...
Uh, possibly, yeah.
Well, it has to be.
I've heard this, but I'm very confused.
It's, it's, it's out, it rings out along the road, along the road.
Say that again?
Yeah, all the barn and stuff is right here.
Yeah, there's a barn on the right-hand side, like almost on the road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that would be Lot three or this.
That guy there.
That's, yeah, one of the farmers you said from...
That big property in between there. They do a lot of intensive gardening, looks like it's a, you know, rows and...
Sounds like you're up further than what I'm thinking.
If Oxford Road is here, this is... Yeah, Oxford Road's up, going up about 10 miles.
Try gardening and stuff.
Up north? Cause that's the opposite of what happens there. South, okay, Mallard too, not a little bit.
No, not a little bit.
Whatever, a little bit.
Okay.
It's death, death hard.
Alright, I can't...
This is, this is almost down there at the, if you remember, the Lehman Farm.
They do chicken houses and everything, step around.
Yeah, the building that's...
Oh, I do know where it is, yeah, okay.
Well, this is, this is south of that, just south of that.
Okay.
Those big tracks that they were cut off back then.
Yeah, there's over several homes back then.
Yeah, well, this is just south of that.
Okay. And where's the farmhouse for this, for this farm? Anybody? There is, there is.
There is?
Okay, alright, I'm not seeing one. Okay, alright.
So, that's in between the farm and those houses, it's up way back.
That makes sense, yeah. I can't picture it.
That where Millard, Millard Wolf used to live. Yeah, that's one little, I guess, that small lot is, I think that was it.
They do give it some amount of money.
Yeah, everything's a ridiculous amount of money.
That's a small lot.
But they must only have access.
Window with their septic system. Yeah, I hate to think.
They must be entirely on that property.
What, you're talking about the well?
No, the septic. Could be true of the well too, though, Jeff, it's just such a small... Well, you just never, you just never know.
Scott, the wording on the non-building waiver, no, I'm just reading through that. No sewage permit will be issued for installation. Shorten it up for disposal system unless it's...
It's kind of, it's kind of...
Unless the municipality and DEP have both approved sewage facilities planning for subdivision described herein.
That gets to be all, that seems good.
Yeah. Well, that would still be...
Running or brewing or whatever, it's a pretty close idea.
So, what are you, what are you saying, Ted?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what that, that non-building waiver, how it applies to this. They'll have to have testing done before they can put a house in.
They sold it, they sold it.
Right, regardless of the size of the property.
It's just the field.
The DEP waiver is independent of the zoning.
But I think the county people bought it.
They don't know or don't care about the size of the lots and whatnot. Right, yeah, exactly. Okay, so what else should we know then for tonight? Cause there's, there's no action required. And you can't anyway. Yeah.
Required to wait and put it down.
Yeah.
Just to familiarize, and they're not doing any add-ons or anything like that to adjoining properties, it's just...
No, which would have been permitted. They can increase the size of the lot, but they can't, there's requirements for increasing the size. Okay, but I thought the county did comment, you haven't commented yet? They did on the previous plan, which was five lots. Oh, okay, they haven't commented on that. In response, they have three lots, so that's, we're back to... Okay.
We just got the two lots and the last two.
Okay.
So, as I see it, that Lot one has, is carrying all the building rights with it. There's none left on those other tracks.
Correct.
So, it can't be, can't do, they can't build them.
But they can't subdivide their lots if there's no subdivision accounting for them. Yeah. But that's what I keep going back to, there's something missing in the logic here.
Go through all this, they can't build them.
It's, they're gonna, they're counting on a re-characterization here at some point? Could be.
So, again, so if you're subdividing and you're meeting the maximum lot size for residential units, then development rights goes with it. It's, when the lots are larger than that, that it, that it becomes, question, if there, if, there's not, you know, I'll show you, show you tonight where you can do that within the context of, of the allocation that you have. Otherwise, what they're, what essentially it tries to do is, so you have X number of, so you have five development rights. And they'll create ag lots, which aren't residential lots, using those five allocations, and all of a sudden, where you intended to have those allocations, smaller lots to preserve the learning tract, now you have five, let me say, twenty-acre lots, then five two-acre lots. So it gets chopped up into large lots, or mini farmettes, whatever you want to call them.
Right.
There. So they, each, they'll come with their own, something to build on something. It's just they're creating residential lots without following the rules of.
Yeah, that's where I, that's where I go to, re-characterization of, of turning them into those, those building.
You're, you're not, I said, you're not alone. Again, again, it's, it's one of, it's one of the, it's one of the, Arizona district has its pro, has its pros.
Yeah, yeah.
Downsize of that particular model.
Yeah.
I've seen strict, strict interpretation where people, usually, like, if you have five building rates and the maximum lot size is two acres, you have to apply them in there to be able to cut that ten-acre piece off. And you lose, and they're used up then.
Yeah.
That, that, that's an option, an option to create more. That works better if, best when you have a maximum lot size that's a little larger than, if you have, like, it's three or four acres. Because then it gives you that more flexibility to create the large lots, best than ten, if you want.
Okay. Was nothing else? Is there any other questions from the board?
No. I ain't gonna be saying this one for a while, though.
Yeah. So, we'll be back in there next month. Hopefully, they'll be, their engineer survey will be in here. So, all right, we need.
Did you want to make a motion on signing, uh, non-building waiver? Why, why?
Do you hurry for that?
There's no hurry for it, no.
No, I, I'd rather wait till we get them in here and do a little more discussion.
Yeah.
And we'll need to table, table this plan.
Well, it was not up for action.
It's not up for action.
And I don't even understand why you'd bring up the non-building waiver for, for action. They're, they did, did they ask for it? They asked, yeah, they brought it, yeah. Okay. Well, then, maybe we oughta, if they asked for that to be brought, then we oughta table it.
Well, before they change their mind.
I just feel better tableing the whole mess.
Yeah.
Yeah. I realize they didn't ask for action on the plan, but you, you changed my mind when you held that up and said we wanted to do action on that. That's a request. And that's a request we should deny.
We'll, we'll cover.
Yeah.
We're gonna table that.
We're gonna cover our bases and table the plan and the non-building waiver.
That's a good idea.
One shot.
Good idea. I'll make a motion to table it.
Table the plan and the non-building waiver.
Till we have more information.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
You want it?
I heard.
No, go ahead.
No, get to Jeff.
Is there any questions about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say move.
And I guess, I'd also say, Ted, feel free to disapprove of me on this. If somebody wants something approved, they show up. You, you shouldn't be the representative. I understand you're trying to be helpful, but this is a complex plan, or probably will be, um, when it becomes a plan, and with a, a non-building waiver, the Ted's sitting there reading, I'm not even sure what they're saying. And we shouldn't be in a position of not having them here to look at it if they want to action, period. Exactly. Again, it's not possible to have action. I just brought it up for discussion.
Right, right, we understand, but, but I think as, as a board, I think we should, it'd have to be a policy that is set.
That's what I'm saying.
Not to act on plans, formally acting plans without formal representation.
Or parts of plans, like non-building waivers, et cetera. I, it's not, that's not, you can't make that a requirement, because that's not in the ordinance. But if you want to make that, in the back of your mind, keep that as a general policy, that's fine. That's our general policy. But you can't.
Without being in the, in the solid.
Right, without it being a part. But it is our discretion to table a plan. Yes, it is. If we so choose.
Right.
For instance, if we can't get questions answered, because nobody's here to discuss. For any reason or no reason at all, the option to table a plan. So understood.
I'll say this, if they bring a plan before us, and they don't feel it's worth representing the plan, I don't feel it's worth us wasting our time reviewing it.
Exactly. Then again, I don't like that some plans come and you see them once the night of and you're excited to. Well, that's why we can have this discussion. This was a good discussion about the plan. I like to bring them more than once. That's, that's up to you, and I, I'd appreciate it.
I, I agree with that, but, well, we know where we stand.
Yeah, I think we're all there on this.
Nobody's opposed to that. If they are, it's okay. Next thing is old business, I guess. No other new business at this point. Well.
We talked about it last month, as new business, or now it's old business?
Now it's old business.
All right.
There's something that they can go for.
Yeah.
And it's less than the.
I don't know if you're here for something, or.
Yeah, the Cronister plan, their, um, three-point-four southbound.
He didn't say you were coming. He didn't ask to be put on the agenda.
He said he submitted, he submitted his everything.
And I reviewed it and sent out another comment letter to him. He didn't.
Yeah, because I tried to hold him and, like.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I have no idea, but I'm too here.
Okay.
If, if you call the office and tell them that you want to be on the agenda, the board is able to, he's here in Mark, I don't think it's allowed, yeah?
Okay, yeah, because I thought he, last two weeks, he was like, hey, where, where are we at with it? And he said, everything's turned in, and so we should be on the agenda. So I tried to get hold of him today, and nothing, so.
Yeah, if you contact the, the office here, they'll give you my work number.
Where is he?
You can, you can call me and ask status and whatnot. I'll, I'll answer your phone call.
Okay. So what, what was the, the column that back?
Well, there, I mean, there's several things that he didn't address. I mean, the stormwater still isn't right, there's still zoning issues. There's, there's a lot, there's still a lot going. So we couldn't have acted on it anyway?
Right.
Yeah. But it's, but to the point, either he shouldn't assume something's gonna be on the agenda without specifically saying, I want this on the agenda, and here are my comments to, here are my reactions to the comments of our engineer. That's the efficient way. I hate that you come here and we can't act on it.
Right, right.
But that's, that's where we.
Last go-around was the whole, the whole deal.
Yeah.
And then, you know, how this is more or less, I guess, my engineer.
Yes.
So.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry. My recommendation is, is you talk to him and you ask him to set up a meeting with me, so we can talk about it.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation to you.
Okay.
Because even if it's on the agenda, if he hasn't addressed the engineering comments, we're just gonna talk about it, we can't approve it, and then we'll have to table it, and you'll get frustrated again.
Right. Okay, I'm just trying to move forward with everything, he didn't help out.
Yeah. It still didn't have long process.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, sorry for the. Kind of stuff we're trying to.
Yeah, we're trying to get past this, so we don't have people coming in there saying.
Everybody's time is valued.
Yeah.
Right. Just trying to get to where the ball's being dropped.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we guess back, we're going to Old Douglas and Danny.
One quick question before, did, Scott, did you give us the comments to Cronister claim? Okay. Because it wasn't even gonna be up for discussion. Yeah, okay, that's, that's fair, but if you could, would you?
You did send, someone sent them, because I have them. Yeah, I have. October twenty-first. It was in one of, uh.
It was in one of the.
One of Rock's emails, or it might have been one of yours. It was attached.
Oh, that's probably what it was, because I.
But it was never specified that, it was just.
That's correct.
Just for review, it was never up for.
Would you, if you'd just send it again, so it's at the top of my email, I'd appreciate it.
It had quite an extensive list, wasn't it, Scott?
Yeah, it's three pages.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Can I just see it up there?
Zane and Sada, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there. I didn't, I didn't go over it because.
I think there's more comments this round than there was the first time.
It was, there was one back in.
Who's his engineer?
Clark.
Clark, okay.
Clark Crowe?
Yeah. Mr. Clark from, who, Oxford, I think? Has he been here before?
I don't want to, so.
Yeah, I can't anywhere, true. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I hate that, but.
Yeah, it's.
Where we are.